Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order and we'll start with our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we ask that you give us Spirit of service and guide us to be good leaders of our citizens that we need. We also ask for us to be renewed with our strength of your presence and the pleasure of helping to build a better community for our future. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Next, ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America, and the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll go ahead and start with the proclamations with the presentation from the Kenneth White Junior High School on Metal Hawk.
Mayor, City Council, good afternoon. We do have a great special group of kids with us today. They're coming from our Mission School District. There are kids from our Kenneth White Junior High. The kids that are going to be presented today with a plaque is the robotics team, and I believe the names are the Metal Hawks Robotics Team. And a special group of kids because they've had several competitions already throughout the state, I think some here locally and some over in Austin. But recently, they have been selected to participate in the FTC World Championship that will take place on April the 18th through the 21st, and this is in Houston, Texas. This is the first FTC team, which is a robotics team, from the Rio Grande Valley to ever compete in the World Championships. And so the Metal Hawks will be competing amongst teams throughout the United States and also competing with other, I believe, 23 countries. So we're very happy to have them here. We want to wish them well, and I know that the City Council and yourself, Mayor, have a plaque for them. But before we continue, I do want to acknowledge that we do have the coach, Mr. Jose Martinez, who's here with us today, and also, I'm sorry, Sanchez, Jose Sanchez. And I also want to acknowledge the principal who's here with us today, Ms. Bennecourt. And so, thank you for being here. Mr. Sanchez, if you want to say a few words before we continue with the presentation, I'd like to see if you can tell us a little bit about your team and introduce the kids.
Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. We'd like to start off by thanking the City Council for having us here today. It's a great privilege to be here, as well as to represent the city of Mission throughout the entire season and next year's competition. These kids are excited. They're excited to compete, they're prepared, and they're excited to show a lot of pride, not only in their school but in the city as well. And I'd like to start off by saying that the season has been extremely successful. The students have put in a lot of hours into this competition. The competition that they compete in is called First Tech Challenge. It's from the first organization. And this organization, they host events to inspire students to go into engineering careers or STEM careers. And so the team that we have here is composed of 15 students, mixed, both male and female. And the way that we start off the season is, at the beginning of the year in September, they have like a whole kickoff, where they're going to be objective of the game. And nobody knows what it is. We wait, it's kind of like a pep rally. And so when we went, they presented the game, and from then on, as soon as the game is released, then the students start planning to see how are they going to approach it. That's where they start checking their problem-solving skills, their teamwork, their organization, how innovative are they? That's also a big part of this competition. Can one of you please bring me one of the blocks, please? So this year's competition, what it was is the students had to get some of these blocks. These are called crypto blocks. And in the middle of the field, it's a 12-by-12 field, and they set up many of these, about 50. And what the students have to do is they have to go and grab them and stack them in a certain pattern. They can only do two at a time. They can do one at a time if they want, but they can do two at a time. Then, once they grab the blocks, there's three columns that they have to go and insert them into the column. So there's three columns of four rows each. The team that normally wins these competitions are the ones that are capable of filling up the entire columns, or all three columns. And not only that, but they're also able to complete the cipher, what they call cipher, which is a certain pattern that they have to do it in. So although it seems kind of at the beginning, like maybe it's a little bit, it's not too hard, it actually, it becomes extremely difficult. And then also, while they're trying to do this, they're competing against three other robots in the same field. So this is the design that the students have made. Now, we did not start like this, okay? One thing that I forgot to mention is, this is the very first year that our students compete in this. So not only are they already going to Worlds, but they're doing it in the rookie season, which is just quite an accomplishment in itself. Excuse me, my throat's a little scratchy. When we were in the super regional competition in Atlanta, Georgia, sorry, Athens, Georgia, we had teams that had been competing in this competition for five to 10 years, and some of them had barely made it to Worlds the first time, and they were really excited. And so when our kids found out they're going to Worlds in the rookie season, it's like, it's just surreal. The moment is so surreal. But it comes as a result of the many and countless hours of work and effort that they put into this competition. So again, these are the crypto blocks that they have, and the robot that they design is, comes with two claws. And what they do is they're able to grab two at a time, and then this mechanism here, and they will lift it up and down, something like that. And again, we didn't start with this mechanism, we're rookie teams, so we started real basic, but as the season progressed, you saw how the kids were learning and how they started integrating more components into their robot. The success of the kids started off back in November. That was the first league meet in the Rio Grande Valley. Here in the Rio Grande Valley, they had to compete three times, and then they had one championship. Throughout the entire season, we saw that they were constantly performing well. They weren't always at the top, but the most important thing was that they learned. Even when they failed, they learned, and they continued to work at it. Eventually, they made it to the RGV Championship Tournament, which is held in January, and there they placed first overall, and they ended up as champions of their division. Because they were champions of their division in the RGV, they earned a spot in the regionals, which were held in Austin, Texas. Austin, Texas is one of the toughest regions in the state to compete in, because you guys know how Austin has become kind of like a second Silicon Valley. There's a lot of technology there. And so when we showed up there, at the beginning, it was a little intimidating, it really was. We saw some robots, we had teams that have been doing this for decades, but we told the kids, you're prepared, you got here by your own accord, you got here by hard work, let's go out there and compete. So the kids did very well that day, and they ended up getting picked by one of the top robots in the nation into an alliance. So that in itself was also an accomplishment. So as an alliance with two other robots, they ended up as division champions in Austin, which is right there in itself, again, it's so surreal. You know, it's a moment where we're like, wow, you know, we did it. And because of that, they earned a super region, a spot in the super regionals, which were held in Athens, Georgia. In Athens, Georgia, they competed against the top, the best teams of 14 other states in Athens, Georgia. That was held back in March, March 7th through 10th, that's when it was held. And so, again, we prepared. We had several teams from the valley, you know, telling us to go and enjoy, you know, go enjoy the competition, but our kids, they had it in their heads already, let's go and compete. Let's see if we can get to Worlds. And that determination is driven throughout the entire year, throughout the entire season. We put countless of hours of work, we were there from in the morning until sundown sometimes. You know, we'd be leaving the school when it was real late at night, dark. And so we got to Athens, Georgia last month, and the kids competed well enough, and they placed 17th in their division. Thirty-four teams out of Athens, Georgia, advanced to the world competition in Houston next week, because they did well enough and they placed 17th, that earned them a spot in the World Championship, which will be next week. And so it's an exciting time, like I said. They're the first team in the valley that will compete at the world competition in this FTC competition. So they made history, and it's a team from Mission. And again, throughout this entire season, these kids have not only represented KY, they represented Mission Sides D, and they represented the city of Mission. Whenever anybody asks us, where are you guys from? We're from Mission, Texas. It's the first thing we'll tell them. You know, and sometimes I have to explain a little bit where we're from, you know, four hours south of San Antonio, but then they understand us, and they start learning where we're at, you know? And so, again, as the season progresses, more and more teams start to tell them, well, you guys are the rookie team that made it all the way over here. That's us, we're the rookie team from Mission, Texas. So again, next week, we're going to be going to the World Championship in Houston, and there they're not only going to represent KY again, they're going to represent the district and the city of Mission, and also the state of Texas and the United States as well, because like previously mentioned, we're going up against 23 other countries. So it's a very, it's been an incredible season. I think it's what I call the kids, it's a fairy tale season for them. But it's a result of the hard work that we see in the kids. You know, as coaches, we're very proud of the efforts that they do. One thing I forgot to mention is, we have, with myself, Mr. Sanchez, alongside Ms. Silva, who's a coach, and we have Mr. Adrian Chapa, who he's not here at the moment, but he's our coach as well. This success has come with a lot of support from our principal, Ms. Brenda Bennecourt, and as well as Mission Sides D. They've been behind us the whole way, and they have supported us, and we wouldn't be here without their support, like I said. But again, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here.
Thank you.
If you'd like, we'd let, I want to call up some kids, the drivers, to come up and do a quick demonstration, just so you can see how the robot moves. Everything that they do, again, is from scratch. There is no, there's no template for you to build this, at all. They have to come up with their own idea, they have to put it together, once they put it together, they have to program the robot, so they're learning some coding along the way, and they have to program it to get it to do what it does. So we'll do a quick demonstration, just to give the audience an idea of what exactly they're doing in the competition. You got your phones? Do you need your phones?
Cute.
Chris. Now, why two drivers? Because there's so many motors on here. On this robot alone, you have about 10 motors currently.
You all want to get them in the middle so we can get all the people to look?
And that's where they stack the blocks. And they can grab two at a time, and that's where they go and they will put them into the box. This robot does come with these mechanical wheels that allow it to travel sideways. You got it again, Eric? We'll set it aside. There you go. It gives them that lateral direction, which gives them a competitive advantage. Now, we did not know that. At the beginning of the season, we started with simple tires, just go front, back, and then if you want to return, you have to kind of do like a tank move, one goes forward, one goes backwards, and then return. But then as we started competing further, we started seeing some of these robots that have some of these mechanical wheels, and we started improving. And it was one more aspect, and then they learned, every single time that we competed, we would, the kids would come back and be satisfied and said, okay, well, at least we made it. No, we got to work, and we started thinking, okay, how can we get better? How can we get better? And that, how can we get better? How can we get there and compete, is the mentality that guides us to where we're at. So we're very, very proud of these kids, very proud that they showed up to every single competition, even though sometimes, like I said, it was a little bit intimidating, they were ready. And they were ready, they were there, they were ready to compete, and they came through it in the day. Let me call the rest of the team up here. In all ways, and introduce something against them, those students. Come on, guys. One, two, three. One, one, one. Say your names here, row in this. Name and row.
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Cadenon. I'm one of the main drivers, one of the main builders, and I help with the program.
I'm Gabriel Coteval. I'm the driver, and I help with building.
Hi, I'm Hugo Mireles, and I help with the programming.
I'm Carlos Wong. I help with the 3D design, and I help scout.
I'm George Salinas. I'm one of the backup drivers, and I helped with the engineering notebook and building.
I'm Danny Villanese, and I help with the building, scouting, and the engineering notebook.
I'm George McManus, and I'm a scavenger. I help with the engineering notebook.
I'm Skin. I help with the engineering book, engineering notebook, building, measuring, and chips. I'm a last round of building, engineering system, and I help with the engineering notebook.
Hi, my name is Jessica Nuss. I'm one of the backup drivers, and I help with the building. I'm Miss Manolo Rondo. I help with the program.
Hi, my name is Alex. I help with some of the building, the engineering notebook, and...
Hi, I'm Jackson. I help with the engineering notebook.
Hi, my name is Juan. I was the engineering notebook, scouting, and engineering.
There's a 2017 Club Meeting, and the Rock is a 12.2.
Once again, congratulations, and on behalf of Mayor Salinas and our City Council, we do have a plaque to present, and this is to wish them well at the competition in Houston. We're very proud. This is a huge thing for the city of Mission, and I want to let you all know that you all are representing the city of Mission very well, so congratulations on that. So it says, "Congratulations to the Kenneth White Junior High School Metal Hawks First Tech Challenge Team for placing at the Super Regional Championship Tournament and advancing to the FTC World Championships on April 18th through the 21st, 2018, in Houston, Texas. Wishing you the best of luck. Signed, Norberto Beto Salinas, Mayor of City of Mission, on April 9, 2018, and City Council." Again, congratulations. But as the City Council, remember, they can step down so we can take a picture with the group.
Mayor, who's the team after here?
There's no need to step forward. Can we get you, let's get you in the middle. Mayor, you can come over here and run it through him, and he can handle these. Handle the button. Step forward a little bit. I'm, sorry, could come forward, yeah. Come forward right there. Step forward, step forward. Everybody look over here? Did you guys come over here? Two, one, smile. One, two, three, two, one. Congratulations. 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 Good luck. Good luck. Congratulations and good luck, guys. Congratulations, good luck. What's in the ocean? If you ever retire the robot, we'd love to have it in our museum.
Yes.
We could build a replica, if you guys like.
That would be nice.
A replica would probably be good. We'll look into it, we'll see if we have the, you know, parts, the components, and we can build a replica, and we can donate to the city. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much for the presentation, and we're very, very proud of you kids.
Very proud.
On item four, proclamation, LMO Crowley Prevention Month.
Yes, Mayor, Council, good afternoon. I know we do have some board members here with us today from our Mission Possible Advisory Board. If they can join me up here while I read the proclamation, we've got our Mr. Rosalinda Libares, Tina M. Lewis, Mr. Homer Garza, Ivan Perez, and Natalie Watu. And our proclamation, Mayor Council, reads as follows. Whereas there are more than 73 million cats and 68 million dogs living in more than 63 million households across the United States, whereas acts of animal abuse, animal fighting, and animal neglect by way of denying basic necessities of care, such as fresh food or shelter, are considered to be animal cruelty. Whereas many people who witness or hear about animal cruelty are not aware that legal action can be taken to help stop the problem and prosecute animal offenders. And whereas enforcement of animal cruelty laws can be carried out by municipal animal control agencies, local policy, and/or by humane organizations that are granted power from the state or local government. Whereas animal welfare organizations across the country work daily to educate people about the proper care of animals and how to prevent animal cruelty. Whereas the city of Mission, along with Palm Valley Animal Shelter, the Lori P. Andrews Paw Center, support activities that bring people and their pets together in a harmonious and self-relationship to educate the public as to the needs of their pets and to provide information on the proper care and treatment of animals. Whereas the city of Mission, adopt a pet program, the Mission Possible Advisory Board, and Palm Valley Animal Shelter, the Lori P. Andrews Paw Center, advocates for unwanted, abandoned, or stray animals, and works towards the adoption of these pets to new loving families, and encourages the spaying and neutering of animals to reduce the overpopulation problem. Whereas the city of Mission commends the efforts of other rescue organizations, such as the RGV Locos Bay Neuter Clinic, Cinderella Pet Rescue, Forgotten Friends, Texas Rescue RGV, Recycled Rover and Friends, Yaki Animal Rescue, Father Roy Snipes or Lady Vala Lupe, Mission Consolidated Independent School District, and Paw Stories, for taking a stand against all forms of animal abuse and neglect. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Animal Cruelty Prevention Month in Mission, Texas, and call upon all residents to report the abuse and cruelty of all animals to the City of Mission Animal Control Department. Proclaimed on this ninth day of April, 2018.
Would like to have a motion to approve the proclamation.
So move, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
To have a motion and a second to approve our proclamation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
And Mayor Council, any of the agencies that are here, we do have a proclamation for each agency.
But I know Mr. Garza is the president of our animal advisory, animal rescue advisory board. I don't think he'd like to say a few words.
Good afternoon, Council. Good afternoon, Mayor. We thank you for proclaiming the month to help us end animal abuse. In our short time, we've created an amazing rescue transport program, which has saved almost 600 lives since we joined in November. So we are moving forward, and we have some great things coming for the four-legged citizens of Mission, so, including the dog parks, which we're really excited about. So thank you, Mayor and Council, for that. And it gives me great honor to be here. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Rojas.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, how are you doing?
Mr. Rojas. Hi, how are you all doing?
Oh, wonderful. Thank you for doing everything. Everybody just kind of squeezing. Awesome. Everybody look over here at me? Right here, in three, two, one. Somebody move? Can we bring that thing up just a little bit? You want me to have the screen down? One more over here, in three, two, one. One more, one more. Three, two, one? All right. We got it. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[1444.91]
Whereas libraries are not just about what we have for people, but what we do for and with people. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools. Whereas libraries are evolving in order to serve their communities and continue to lead the way in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. Whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative STEAM programming, job-seeking resources, and the power of reading. Whereas libraries and librarians look beyond their traditional roles and provide more opportunities for community engagement and deliver new services that connect closely with patrons' needs. Whereas libraries support democracy and effect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through the 14th, 2018, to be National Library Week and encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library. Because of you, libraries lead. Proclaimed on this ninth day of April 2018.
Move for approval. Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
I just want to say that we did put a book, we did put a book on every seat here. Their donations that come to the library, we want to give back and encourage the reading. We did put a flyer in there for activities that we're having throughout the week at the library. This evening, we're going to have a craft. They're going to be making stress balls. Tomorrow, we have a book discussion, A Man Called O by Frederick Bachman. Wednesday, we're going to have a bingo for children and their parents to come and join us. On Thursday, we're going to show the movie Coco. Popcorn and drinks will be provided. Friday, we're going to have a Books With The Sidewalk sale. We're going to bring books out to the front and they can fill up a bag of donations for a dollar. And then on Saturday, we are having a book festival. We're working together with Gabeo Sanchez. He's the editor for the Raving Press. So we have several authors lined up. There's going to be a publishing presentation, children's storytime, meet and greet with the authors, art exhibition, poetry readings, and then among other activities. So we invite the public to join us this week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rocha. Do you all mind taking a picture with the council and the mayor? And Mayor, I do want to say that I want to commend not only Ms. Rocha and her staff, but the advisory board. I know that we have a lot of events throughout the year and so we're very happy with the services that you all provide in our library. Thank you.
The board is very, very supportive. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you want to get over here?
Everybody look over here at me? Oh, that's perfect, right there. In three, two, one. Smile. Do one more. In three, two, one. And we got it. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Council. Yes, it's Crime Victims Rights Week, Mayor, City Council. With me today, I have Diana Macias, our Crime Victim Liaison, and Corporal Robert Rodriguez from our COP Office, Community Oriented Policing Office. These are the spearheads of this project for me. This coming Thursday will be our 11th annual event that we'll have across the street here at the Police Department, inviting you and the general public. It's from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. as we honor the rights of our victims here in our community. I want to read the proclamation. It reads as follows. Whereas Americans for the Victims of more than 20 million crimes each year affecting individuals and communities, whereas providing victims with knowledge of their rights and available services further strengthens their ability to recover by restoring a sense of self-empowerment. Whereas a trauma-informed response to victims promotes healing and fosters strength in survivors. Whereas unaddressed trauma from victimization weakens the resilience of victims and their communities, impeding their ability to withstand future trauma. Whereas a multidisciplinary response involving collaboration among victim service professionals, criminal justice officials, legal professionals, medical and mental health providers, and community leaders is essential to reach and serve all victims, especially those who are marginalized, have disabilities, or live in remote locations. Whereas strengthening the multidisciplinary response, bringing diverse skills, perspectives, and understandings together in the service of victims also serves to build the resilience of those responders by strengthening the confidence in their roles, abilities, and sense of contribution. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week is April 8th through the 14th, 2018, provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that all victims of crime, especially those who are challenged in to reach or serve, afford their rights and receive a trauma-informed response. And whereas the City of Mission is served by dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for justice for all victims and survivors. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through the 14th, 2018, to be Crime Victims Rights Week, to honor crime victims and survivors and those who serve them, proclaimed on this the ninth day of April 2018.
So move, Mayor.
Second. Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve our proclamation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council.
Thank you.
Chief.
That's the only other spearheading in this project. So a little bit.
Check, yeah. Here in three, two, one. Nobody move? Yeah, that worked. You got it.
Sorry. Make sure.
Thank you.
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 Mayor, City Council, next item is proclamation for Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
Also with us today is our Communications Superintendent Sarah Salinas and Communications Officers Sonia Alvarado and Mr. Pedro Ibarra. I'm sorry. Again, this is another week where we celebrate our telecommunications. And before I start the proclamation, we want to thank you for the purchase of our new radio system. Our dispatch center actually just went operational this past week with all the new equipment that you allowed us to purchase on this 2.2 million project that we did with Morroola. So far, obviously, everything's working fine, brand-new equipment servicing our police department, our officers, and our firefighters. So we thank you for that. The proclamation reads as follows. Commending women who service public safety telecommunications such as 911 operators and dispatchers are dedicated to saving lives. They respond to Texans in times of great need, and their specialized skill and calming, caring presence are invaluable to the long-sought state. Whereas the Commission of State Emergency Communications worked with local and state governments to ensure reliable access to emergency telecommunications services. To highlight the invaluable role of public safety telecommunications, the Commission designates a week in April for an awareness campaign. Whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities, by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas at this time, we encourage all citizens of Mission to extend their appreciation to our public safety telecommunications, their diligent efforts to ensure that help is on the way when our citizens need it most. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby designate the week of April 8th through the 14th, 2018, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, proclaimed on this the ninth day of April 2018.
So move, Mayor.
Second. Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the proclamation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief's going to the spearheading of this project. So a little bit.
Check, yeah. Here in three, two, one. Nobody move? Yeah, that worked. You got it.
Sorry. Make sure.
Thank you.
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 Mayor, City Council, next item is proclamation for Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
Also with us today is our Communications Superintendent Sarah Salinas and Communications Officers Sonia Alvarado and Mr. Pedro Ibarra. Again, this is another week where we celebrate our telecommunications. And before I start the proclamation, we want to thank you for the purchase of our new radio system. Our dispatch center actually just went operational this past week with all the new equipment that you allowed us to purchase on this 2.2 million project that we did with Morroola. So far, obviously, everything's working fine, brand-new equipment servicing our police department, our officers, and our firefighters. So we thank you for that. The proclamation reads as follows. Commending women who service public safety telecommunications such as 911 operators and dispatchers are dedicated to saving lives. They respond to Texans in times of great need, and their specialized skill and calming, caring presence are invaluable to the long-sought state. Whereas the Commission of State Emergency Communications worked with local and state governments to ensure reliable access to emergency telecommunications services. To highlight the invaluable role of public safety telecommunications, the Commission designates a week in April for an awareness campaign. Whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities, by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas at this time, we encourage all citizens of Mission to extend their appreciation to our public safety telecommunications, their diligent efforts to ensure that help is on the way when our citizens need it most. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby designate the week of April 8th through the 14th, 2018, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, proclaimed on this the ninth day of April 2018.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the proclamation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
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 Next item is the department reports. You have them in your packet.
So move for approval.
If you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the department reports? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Citizens' participation, do we have anybody from the audience that would like to address the council? State your name and address, please.
I have a letterman at the Mission Event Center. Mayor and Council, you've heard all the proclamations here today, and our staff has gotten together and they're going to do a community roundup to celebrate all the different proclamations in the month, all the things that we celebrate this month. And that's going to be on April the 21st. It's going to be right outside of City Hall here in the rotunda. So we'll be celebrating not only Animal Cruelty Prevention Month, Fair Housing Month, CBG Week, Library Week, Arbor Day, Earth Day, Trash Bash, the other lineal. So there's a lot of things to celebrate here in Mission, and we're glad to be able to do this for the community. So there's going to be, you know, entertainment, food, games, and activities for the kids. So we do invite the entire public to come out on April the 21st, right here at City Hall, from 10:00 to 2:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Aida.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to address the council? If not, you want to?
No.
Okay. Next item, public hearings.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for a rezoning of .825 acres out of Lot 265, John H. Sherry Subdivision. The property is currently zoned R1 Single Family Residential, and the intent is to rezonate to C3 General Business. The applicant is Norelinda G. Garza. And if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On March 28th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located approximately a quarter mile north of Griffin Parkway along the east side of Sherry Road. The current zones in the area are AOI to the north and east. To the west, we have C3 General Commercial, and to the south, we have AOI, Agriculture Open Intrum. On January 10th, 2018, a portion of this acreage was rezoned to C3. The intent was to build a new commercial facility and keep a portion of the property for a single-family home. The request now is to include the remaining residential R1 portion and to also include it as a C3 General Business area. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody from the audience? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the ordinance is 4621, and we do want to accept the recommendation from PNC and staff.
Would you approve?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item B.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a rezoning of the south 7.5 acres out of Lot 13, Goodwin Track Subdivision, number three. The property is currently zoned AOI, and the intent is to rezonate to R3. EMS Investments LLC is the applicant, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On March 28th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located half a mile north of Griffin Parkway along the west side of Inspiration Road. Some of the surrounding zones include Agriculture Open Intrum to the north and to the east. To the east, we also have R4 Mobile and Modular Homes. To the west, we also have more AOI agriculture. And to the south, we do have a plot of single-family residence that's under construction. In viewing the existing land uses in the area, the predominant land use has long been single-family. The future land use map also reflects this area as a low-density residential area. Rezoning the site to R3 would be spot zoning, and it would be detrimental to the existing single-family homes in the area. There are some single-family communities to the north and the one that's under construction to the south. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. However, the board and staff recommended against the R3 zone and recommended instead approval of R1 Single Family Residential. Staff has recommended denial, but consideration of R1 Single Family Residential. Our city manager is also in support of R1. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? The ordinance 4622, and the recommendation is to deny from the planning and zoning, and also from our staff. The motion?
Well, for approval, Mayor.
Second. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are the applicants going to be able to accept the R1?
Yes, we did have a chance to speak to the applicant, and he was receptive to the R1 zone.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
The motion was to deny?
Yes. To.
On April 24th, we have a small business workshop in partnership with the UTRGV Small Business Development Center titled "What's Behind the Numbers," focused on financial statements. The workshop will take place from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Chamber of Commerce, and it is free to attend this workshop. On May 3rd, we have a member spotlight mixer scheduled from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at Von Foss. The event will take place at our members' location, which is 3300 West Expressway 83, Suite 1240, in McAllen, Texas. On May 4th, we have a Facebook ads workshop at the Chamber of Commerce from 10:00 a.m. to noon, and this workshop is free to attend. On May 10th, we're hosting our next Buenos Aires Luncheon, featuring Vince Young, former NFL QB and UT alum, at the Mission Event Center. The event is scheduled from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., with individual tickets at $25. On May 18th, we have a Coffee Connection scheduled from 8:30 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. with the Loretto. The event will take place at their location, which is 1233 East Griffin Parkway in Mission, Texas. On May 23rd, we have a grand opening ribbon cutting scheduled for Mission Valley Nursing and Transitional Care. The event will take place at 1200 South Bryan Road, here in Mission, Texas, and it'll take place from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m. And the last thing on today's agenda is another member spotlight mixer with Hawthorne Suites, which will be on May 24th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the event will take place from 4801 West Expressway 83 in McAllen, Texas. So as you can certainly see, we're busy at the Mission Chamber of Commerce. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the department reports. You have them in your packet.
I move for approval.
If you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the department reports. Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Citizens' participation, do we have anybody from the audience that would like to address State your name and address, please.
Hi, the chairman at the Mission Event Center. Mayor and council, you've heard all the proclamations here today, and our staff has gotten together, and they're going to do a community roundup to celebrate all the different proclamations in the month, all the things that we celebrate this month. And that's going to be on April the 21st. It's going to be right outside of City Hall here in the rotunda. So we'll be celebrating not only Animal Cruelty Prevention Month, Fair Housing Month, CBG Week, Library Week, Arbor Day, Earth Day, Trash Bash, the other lineal. So there's a lot of things to celebrate here in Mission, and we're glad to be able to do this for the community. So there's going to be, you know, entertainment, food, games, and activities for the kids. So we do invite the entire public to come out on April the 21st, right here at City Hall, from 10:00 to 2:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Ada.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to address the council? If not, you want to?
No.
Okay. Next item, public hearings.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for a rezoning of .825 acres out of Lot 265, John H. Cherry Subdivision. The property is currently zoned R1 Single Family Residential, and the intent is to rezonate to C3 General Business. The applicant is Noralinda G. Garza. And if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On March 28, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located approximately a quarter mile north of Griffin Parkway, along the east side of Cherry Road. The current zones in the area are AOI to the north and east. To the west, we have C3 General Commercial, and to the south, we have AOI, Agriculture Open Intrum. On January 10, 2018, a portion of this acreage was rezoned to C3. The intent was to build a new commercial facility and keep a portion of the property for a single-family home. The request now is to include the remaining residential R1 portion and to also include it as a C3 General Business area. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody from the audience? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the ordinance is 4621, and we do want to accept the recommendation from P&amp;Z and staff.
Would you approve?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item B.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a rezoning of the south 7.5 acres out of Lot 13, Goodwin Track Subdivision, number three. The property is currently zoned AOI, and the intent is to rezonate to R3. EMS Investments LLC is the applicant, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On March 28, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located half a mile north of Griffin Parkway, along the west side of Inspiration Road. Some of the surrounding zones include agriculture open intrum to the north and to the east. To the east, we also have R4 mobile and modular homes. To the west, we also have more AOI agriculture. And to the south, we do have a plot of a single-family residence that's under construction. In viewing the existing land uses in the area, the predominant land use has long been single-family. The future land use map also reflects this area as a low-density residential area. Rezoning the site to R3 would be spot zoning, and it would be detrimental to the existing single-family homes in the area. There are some single-family communities to the north and the one that's under construction to the south. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. However, the board and staff recommended against the R3 zone and recommended instead approval of R1 Single Family Residential. Staff is recommending denial, but consideration of R1 Single Family Residential. Our city manager is also in support of R1. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? The ordinance 4622, and the recommendation is to deny from the planner and zoning, and also from our staff. The motion?
I'll for approval, Mayor.
Second.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are the applicants going to be able to accept the R1?
Yes, we did have a chance to speak to the applicant, and he was receptive to the R1 zone.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
The motion was to deny?
Yes, to deny.
To deny R3 and approve R1, Mayor.
So we have a motion and a second to deny. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item C.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and on-site consumption of alcoholic beverages at Renees of Cherry Land. The address is 2600 East Griffin Parkway, being a 1.04 acre tract of land out of Lot 246, Johnny Cherry Subdivision. The property is currently zoned C3, and Renees Brewster LLC is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On March 28, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The 8,506 square foot establishment is between Hackberry Avenue and Taylor Road along the south side of Griffin Parkway. Renees of Cherry Land has been at this location since 2000, and previously, a CUP for the sale and on-site consumption of beer and wine was issued on April 12, 2017. However, the applicant would now like to add mixed drinks and other liquor or alcoholic drinks to the menu. The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from 7:30 to 5:00 p.m. A total of eight employees man the operation, and parking and landscaping are meeting code. I would also note that there are no churches, private or public schools, or a public hospital within the area. So this one, this item is compliance with Section 6-4 of the zoning code. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years, at which time the CUP will have to be renewed along with their TABC license. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this? Anybody in favor or against this? Item? Anybody in favor or against?
You're in favor. Yes.
Okay. The adoption of the ordinance is 4622.
Would you approve?
Second.
The motion is to approve, the recommendation is to approve by planner and zoning and by staff. We do have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4622 and the conditional use permit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. We do have a disposition of minutes. We have a city council meeting that we had on March 26 of 2018.
I move for approval.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of that meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. We also have to acknowledge the minutes for meetings that we had for Planner and Zoning Commission on March 14th. Also, Mission Redevelopment Authority on February 27th. The Mission Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone on February 27th. And the Mission Economic Development Corporation on February 20th. The Mission Boys and Girls Club on February 8th, and the Zoning Board of Adjustments on February 21 of 2018. All these minutes have to be acknowledged. Do we need a motion?
I move to approve the knowledge.
Second.
Minutes.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item 4.0, 4.1.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.1 is for preliminary plat approval of Abrego Estates, being a re-subdivision of a 1.264 acres out of Lot 182, Johnny Cherry Subdivision. The property is currently zoned R1. The developers Julio Abrego and the engineers Melden and Hunt. Mayor and Council, what we have here is a subdivision, or a proposed subdivision that's going to be located along the north side of Selena Street. This is in the Glasscock area, approximately about half a mile north of the Expressway corridor along the west side of Glasscock. They're proposing six single-family residential lots, all exceeding the minimum 6,000 square feet. These lots are about 136 feet deep, and they're close, they're a little bit over 8,000 square feet each. The proposed water, sewer, streets, and fire protections are existing or will meet city standards and codes. Staff is recommending approval, as is the P&amp;Z, our city manager, and other department heads. Item 4.1 is now before you.
We do need the recommendations to go and approve the preliminary plat approval.
Would you approve?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Item 4.2 is authorize the change in location of the April 23, 2018 City Council meeting to the Mission Event Center. Mayor, we're requesting this due to early voting starting on that day, and therefore, council chambers is going to be used for voting, so we'd like to move the location to the Event Center.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve that.
Would you approve?
Second.
They have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. 4.3.
Yes, sir. This is the approval of the Election Services Contract for the May 5, 2018 City of Mission General and Special Election, and this is with the County of Hidalgo. They've given us an estimated cost for the election, which is going to be $40,690.54. Of course, this will probably, you know, it will probably be a little bit lower. They estimate the highest possible, but we'd like to approve the contract with the Elections Office.
We do need a motion to approve.
Would you approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the Election Service Contract for the City of Mission and the County of Hidalgo for $40,690.54. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. 4.4.
Yes, sir. This is the approval of a request by the County of Hidalgo Elections Department to use city facility for primary runoff and November general election for early voting and Election Day. Mayor and Council, this request is for the Celestino Ramirez Fire Station, number three, and this will be for the primary runoff, which runs from May 14 through May 18, for early voting, and May 22 for Election Day. And also for the November general election, which will be from October 22 through November 2, for early voting, and November 6 for Election Day. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move. Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve. Request by the County of Hidalgo to use the facilities at the primary runoff for the November election and for the voting on Election Day.
Yes, sir.
For the request of Celestino Ramirez Fire Station?
Yes, sir.
And the November election, November 22?
Yes, sir. Early voting would start November 22 through November 2nd.
November 2, and November 6, Election Day. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. 4.5.
Yes, sir. This is a request by South Texas College to use the City Hall facilities for early voting on Election Day for the Board of Trustees, Single Member District Number Two election, and this is for the May 5, 2018 election. STC sent out a letter to request the facility, and the dates and times are the same as the city's election for early voting. So the city and school, Mayor and Council, will basically be here in council chambers, and STC and Awa Sed will be in the community room. So we're recommending approval for the use, for STC to be able to use the facility.
I move for approval as presented.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the request by South Texas College?
Yes, sir.
And who else?
This one is just South Texas College. Everybody else, we've already approved.
They're going to be in the conference room?
They're going to be in the community room, yes, sir.
How about the school?
The school's going to be in here. The city is going to be, like always, the city on this side, the school on that side, and the little community room where we're usually used for the election.
So the city's going to be here and the school?
Yes, sir.
In this room?
In this room. STC will be in the other room.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Ms. Anna, I just, is there going to be sufficient signage so that the public can know exactly where to go? Because it's a little confusing sometimes.
Yes, as a matter of fact, the county, Ms. Ramon was here earlier, as well as her staff, and we're trying to get all that logistics together and what they're going to be doing. They're going to have, like, a team outside. I have my signage for here. Her concern is mostly people are not going to go into the community room, since they're already used to coming in here, and also for the curbside. So we're kind of, you know, brainstorming, and that way we can make sure everything's taken care of by April 23rd. So, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You've got it all under control.
Yes, sir. We'll have signage. Everybody will know. I mean, nothing will change for the city and school. The city's on this side, and the school's on this side. That's like the way we've always had it. Two separate lines, two check-ins. It's just going to be now, we'll have Awa Sed and STC, and they will be in the community room.
Okay, we had not mentioned Awa Sed. So Awa Sed is going to be here also?
Yes, sir. Awa Sed was going to be here also.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Financial report.
Item 4.6 is the February 2018 financial statements. The unadjusted beginning fund balance was $33,228,912. Total revenues for the period were $7,661,777, and total expenditures were $12,317,430, leaving an unadjusted fund balance of $28,573,260. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion to approve the...
So move, Mayor.
Adjustment at the ending of the fund balance. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
4.7, Dominguez.
Mayor of City Council, item 4.7 is authorization to allow the purchase of a firearm to honorably-retired Peace Officer Jose Antonio Garcia, Assistant Chief of Police, in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Section 614.051. Honorably-retired Peace Officer Jose Antonio Garcia has requested to purchase his Glock 17 Generation IV 9mm service weapon, serial number BACG523, from the Mission Police Department. Under the Government Code, Section 614.051, an honorably-retired peace officer may purchase his service weapon from a governmental entity in which he or she was commissioned. The purchase price for the weapon is $409, which is the cost to the Mission Police Department. Staff and the city manager recommend approval of this item.
I move for approval.
Second.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is he going to sign a no-harm clause for...
Yes, I'm getting with our city attorney for that.
Just in case.
Yes.
So we're getting the $409.
Yes, Mayor, that's what the cost of the weapon was to the police department, so that's what we would charge him.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize Chief to sell or to approve the sale of the firearm to Chief Garcia. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 4.8 is the authorization to purchase IV gene tests from a sole-source provider. We are seeking authorization to purchase these tests for regular, full-time firefighters who choose to participate. These tests identify actual disease presence such as breast, cold, and liver and lung cancer. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Anybody has any questions on this?
No, sir.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. 4.9, Montugia.
Item 4.9 is the approval for professional services with Mario Ansaldura. Dr. Ansaldura will provide specimen collection and processing for regular, full-time firefighters who choose to participate in the IV gene testing. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval. Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the professional services of Dr. Mario Ansaldura.
Thank you.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. 410, Robert.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. Come before you, seeking authorization to purchase equipment via state-approved contract for the Public Works Department. We're seeking to purchase a 2018 Eagle Beaver 25X PT trailer at a cost of $29,423.24 from H&amp;V Equipment Services via Buy-Boy Contract Number 52917. Staff, city manager recommend approval.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I have, I do have a question, Mayor.
411.
Was the courtesy phone call made to local vendors?
This is going to be purchased, they have an office in Progreso here in the valley.
Were courtesy phone calls to the local vendors made?
They don't, this trailer, it's 50,000-ton rated, I mean 50,000-pound rated, is to carry the asphalt paper and the roller trailers that they have here locally don't have that capacity.
Mayor, I move to motion to approve this.
Second.
Where are you at? 411 or 410?
That's 4.10, Mayor.
Didn't we vote on it already?
No, we haven't.
Okay, so your motion is to...
Approve as presented by Mr. Selena.
What, the purchase equipment for the amount of $29,000?
Yes.
Is that it? Okay, the recommendation was to go ahead and do that. We have a motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. 411 now.
Yes, sir. Mayor and City Council members, item 411 is the authorization to approve first one-year renewal option for the purchase of ready-mixed concrete for the Public Works and Parks and Recreation Department. We will be renewed with Royal Ready Mix LLC. The first one-year renewal will be at, option is at 0% increase in price at $105 per cubic yard. Orders will be placed on an as-needed basis throughout this year's term. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
The staff, this is for Royal?
Royal Ready Mix LLC, for the purchase of ready-mixed concrete.
Okay, we do have a motion.
Second.
And a second to go ahead and approve the renewal of the, with Royal Ready Ready Mix LLC at the same price.
Yes.
$105 per square yard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. 412.
Yes, sir. Mayor and City Council members, item 412 is the approval of sanitary sewer service agreement between the City of Mission and Lone Star Citrus Growers. The agreement will allow Lone Star Citrus Growers to dispose of industrial wastewater at the City of Mission Industrial Pre-Treatment Plant. Fees associated with disposals are based on meter readings, per gallon, industrial waste, biochemical oxygen demand, and suspended solid surcharge. Staff and city manager recommend approval of agreement.
I have a question.
We do have a motion, do I have a motion?
I have a question, Mayor. How are we getting this to our plant?
This is a...
Oh, they're going to transport it via their vacuum trucks.
Like a vacuum truck is bringing it to the site.
And they're going to dispose at our pre-treatment, industrial, pre-treatment plant, and it's going to be metered.
So as it's coming in, it's going to get metered?
It's going to get metered, yes, and they're going to get a monthly invoice.
The reason we're doing it is they have about 100, maybe 300 people working for them.
Yes.
They're all from Mission, and it's outside city limits, but we're making it happen to help them out, and I think we're going to be disposing here in the plant?
Yes, at the pre-treatment plant, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I move for approval. This is presented.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members. Item 4.13 is the authorization to execute first one-year renewal option for sludge management services for the Public Works Department. We would like to renew with the Nally Water Solutions LLC for transfer and disposal of sludge in a liquid and solid form. First one-year renewal option is a 0% increase in price. This will be through April 2nd, 2019, and the approximate cost for the whole year will be of $212,086. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
This is 212 by, for what? For what load?
No, this is throughout the year to dispose of sludge at the wastewater treatment plant and water plants.
Move for approval, Mayor.
We do have a motion?
Second.
And a second to go ahead and approve the authorization to execute one-year renewal contract with the major infrastructure of the Public Works Department?
Yes, sir.
For a cost of $212.86 for one year?
For the whole year.
For the whole year?
We'll use them as we need them to dispose of sludge in a liquid form and solid form.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. 414, Robert.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members. Item 4.14 is the authorization to award bids for roadside mowing and litter removal services. The City of Mission Purchasing Department received two bid responses. The apparent low bidder was the Copara Group LLC DBA, the ground guys of Mission, which failed to acknowledge the conflict of interest questionnaire form and therefore were not responsive. Therefore, staff is recommending to award to Gulf Coast Contractors, Inc., who is the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, meeting all specifications. The estimated cost throughout the one-year term will be approximately $80,000 for the services, and will be requested on a as-needed basis. Staff and city manager recommend approval for this item.
I'm second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the estimated cost of $80,000 per service for one year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item 416. Item 415, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I have item 4.15 is authorization to reject and resolicit bids for the pylon sign for the Parks Office. At bid opening, we received only one bid response. The sole bid received was from AAA. Electrical signs was found to be non-responsive but not submitting a bid bond, and the sign executed conflict of interest questionnaire as required by the general terms and conditions. Staff and city manager recommend to reject and solicit for bids.
We need a motion to go ahead and reject them?
So moved. Second.
We do have a motion and a second to reject all bids. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you. Item 4.16 is the authorization to solicit bids for the purchase of one Bobcat compact tractor. The estimated cost of this Bobcat with a few specific attachments is $81,000. Staff and city manager recommend this approval.
The, do we need a motion to go ahead and approve?
Would you approve?
Second.
The purchase of the Bobcat for $81,000. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1737.53]